Yeah.
So, our scope and our purpose was to review the federal, state, the local laws and policies, review the currency, emergency management, and then present the final. So what we have tonight should hopefully complement what has already been presented to council in the past on emergency management. We haven't spent any time, or a lot of time, defining a lot of the role for an emergency manager. What we focused on was the laws, policies, and the guidelines from federal and state. I did put one slide in, just as a reference, to define emergency management. This is the definition by Homeland Security and FEMA, as well as several emergency management professional organizations. This is their definition, which is defined as a managerial function charged with creating a framework to reduce vulnerability and cope with disasters. Their vision is to promote a state, not vulnerable, community with the capacity to cope with hazards and disasters, and their mission is to protect the communities by coordinating and integrating all of the emergency management activities. The federal, state, local laws, policies, and guides that we referenced while we were doing our research were all listed here, and these are the laws and the guides and the policies that we'll cover tonight. So the first one is the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief Emergency Assistance Public Law. This is a federal law, and the law is designed to bring an orderly and systematic approach to federal disaster assistance for state and local governments. And to do that, it is by encouraging the development of disaster preparedness, assistance plans, so our EOP plan programs, capabilities, organizations by states and local governments.
Excuse me, just a quick question. Is this in the deck?
No, I'm looking for two. So we have a different deck than you have. You were provided the last three presentations of emergency management, and this one should have been in your packet as well.
I don't think it is.
It is, and I just updated with the... Okay. I'll make sure that you get a copy of this as well. Would you like a copy of this?
I think that might be somewhat helpful. I mean, the reason that we get the packet ahead of time is so that it's some valuable discussion, and we already have some foundation for the conversation. The other is to make sure that the public is aware of what's going to be discussed, and that's just disturbing. It's not very easy for them to go ahead and participate or us. I'm saying that's undoubtedly mine, because I learned it here, so you might ask why.
So what we have tonight is one part of everything. It starts out with...
Did you see him? Guy walking around checking cars.
There's options in the options. So you're giving us all the three.
Skipboard, too.
What was included in your packet was the three previous presentations.
Walking by cars, looking at them.
And then there are some other handouts that were included in the packet.
There was a cop that went over to your neighbors.
Okay, so there was another presentation.
Okay, I talked to that guy, and I asked him if he's looking for that guy. He's in the church over there.
This presentation did not belong in the packet. So the musician power is that incorporated into this one or no?
No.
Okay.
It's just for information purposes.
Yes.
The council communication contains the information that she's highlighting on the...
Okay, from the letters. Okay, great, thanks. I apologize if you get this one. We will get one after this one. Now that we know what happened, we don't keep looking in front of the page. Great.
Well, just as a point of information, it is our council policy that we don't have new material done in study session like this intended, although we haven't had a chance to see, so just making that point.
I will say that the information that is in this particular PowerPoint is included in the written packet, the council communication. The PowerPoint is just the highlights of what's in the council packet, so the information is the same. If you would like to postpone this discussion, you can do so when you have the packet filled.
Counsel, what's your pleasure? I just want to continue without... This does look like it's a summary of this, so I would like to give you a record with my session. Counsel, any questions?
It does seem pertinent. I mean, ideally, I think we'd all have the presentation, but if the information is covered in the summaries you just stated, I'd be more comfortable with it.
Sorry.
Although, as Member Berantine pointed out, our policy does state that we should have all handouts ahead of time. Because of the particular nature of this, I would like to move forward and not lose time on our discussion about this.
Okay.
I actually do believe that moving this forward is important, but I also believe it was important for us to have this information. I'm okay if we move ahead, but I'm not sure we should act on it unless it's obvious. Thank you.
Right. Yeah, okay, great. Counsel members, Sarah?
I'd like to go forward with the conversation as well, but I think I may be a little bit confused on what exactly is going to be presented. Do you mind just looking through the slides real quick, just to see? Because I think what we had in our packet is just a double up of the presentation.
That's what our interims and...
It's not all?
Yeah. Counsel member Berantine, next.
What we were told was that the information on these slides is in somewhere here. I don't believe that it is. And my concern then is that we're going to be basing some information off of information we didn't have to go ahead and make sure that we put it in with all this. In order to go ahead and just look at this, it is not a summary of what is there. So because there are certain legal guidelines, that I spent a lot of time looking back, listening to previous meetings on what we did, I kind of don't appreciate having information that I'm not sure that I've had a chance to look at, considering the issues that I would like to bring up on what we're doing. This is very serious. This is extremely important that we get this done, and I don't want to delay it, but I also don't want anything done where the community doesn't believe that they have full information, because they already believe that it's being done pretty capriciously, taken too long, and then dumped behind closed doors. So I prefer not to keep doing that.
Okay, we have enough to move it forward. I don't think anybody's trying to do anything behind closed doors. We don't take action tonight, except to suggest that somebody work it forward, and at that point, we can say whole film or whatever as well. So let's get as much information as we can tonight. Could you flip through the slides really quickly so that you can see what is on each? So this is just a summary of all of the information that we're bringing forward. There's really nothing new. We're highlighting the laws and the policies. So we're bringing forward some highlights of several federal laws, policies and guides, state laws and guides, and then we're also looking at the municipal code for the city in Englewood. So we're looking at the Stanford Act, Homeland Security Preparedness Goals, CRS 2433.5, Part 7, Emergency Management, CRS Title 29, Article 22, Hazardous Materials, the Comprehensive Preparedness Guide by Colorado State Disaster Emergency Management, and then looking at the municipal guide, and what we have in our own code, and then really looking at the NIMS, the Incident Management System in Depth. This is just a training matrix, suggested training throughout the city in various... Do you want to look at the really fast? Is that what you wanted, Ms. Member Berantine? Or is she's going through each one now? And then the priorities of what we feel need to be accomplished within the city, and then our own recommendations. And is that it? Yes. Okay, so we have quite a longer one. Yes. Okay. This is, in part, included in all of the previous presentations that you've received, but this is diving much deeper into the laws and the policies and the guides. Okay. Thank you. You can go back to where you were. Okay, so we left off on the Stafford Disaster Relief Emergency Assistance Act, and this act is important. This is achieving greater coordination and responsiveness of disaster preparedness and relief programs by encouraging the development of comprehensive preparedness and assistance plans. So this is our EOP plan, Emergency Operations Plan. City Council should have received a draft of the Emergency Operations Plan from 2015. It is a draft. It was never adopted by the city or council, and it has never been practiced throughout the city. Next up is the Federal Homeland Security National Preparedness Goals, and this is highlighting an approach to prepare for threats and hazards that pose the greatest risk to security. It also describes a vision for preparedness and identifies the core capabilities necessary to achieve that vision, which is five critical areas of prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and recovery. These are the five critical mission areas for emergency management. Next is the state law. So this is Colorado Title 24, Principal Departments, Article 33.5, Public Safety, and Part 7, Emergency Management. And there's four paragraphs within here that we just wanted to highlight. One is the minimum composition of a disaster agency is the director or coordinator appointed and governed by the chief executive officer, or in our case, would be the city manager. Also, each agency shall prepare and keep current an emergency operations plan. You do not have a current emergency operations plan. And then lastly, prepare and distribute a written statement of emergency responsibilities and the chain of command. While the city has included emergency management in the municipal code, however, it is not robust and fully adapted emergency management plan. And then I have an outline of the municipal code coming up in three or four slides. Next is the Colorado by statutes Title 29, Local Hazardous Substance Incidents, Article 22. The city has adopted Resolution 105, which is the Arapahoe County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, and that was adopted in 2015. State of Colorado Disaster Emergency Management Comprehensive Preparedness Guide. Couple items here to highlight is that municipalities can elect an emergency management agency. If this has occurred, the information in the guide is relevant. If the municipality does not have an emergency management agency, the county ultimately has responsibility to provide emergency management services. However, home rule municipalities, City Englewood, must have a system outlined in their charter for how they will manage emergencies and disasters. Look at the charters, Max, which it is. Okay. So what I found when I looked in the charter is Chapter 7, the Public Aid, Mutual Aid, and Emergency Response. There is an emergency response authority paragraph in here designating the city manager as the authority. However, what has been suggested is that that be expanded to what are the duties of the coordinator? How do we address mutual aid agreements? What is the succession of authority for emergency management? Those are the things that we need to include in our charter. Now I'm going to hand it over to Tim, and Tim is going to talk about NIMS.
NIMS is acronym for the National Emergency Management System. Emergency managers thrive on acronyms, and going to their meetings is like they're speaking another language. NIMS came into being in 2003 with a presidential directive. It was actively published in 2004 and evolved into a present form, which the Department of Homeland Security put out in 2008. NIMS is a comprehensive incident management system, covers preparedness, communication, information management, resource management, command management, and ongoing management and maintenance. It's not something you can get one time. It's a process that continues. You have continuous training, and you have to be devoted to the NIMS process. Why do we need NIMS? It's a consistent approach in all levels of government to work together to prepare for, respond to, and recover from incidents regardless of cause, size, or complexity. The adoption of NIMS by the state is a condition for receiving federal preparedness assistance. NIMS is applicable to states, local governments, private sector organizations, critical infrastructure owners, operators, non-governmental organizations, and organizations with an active role in emergency management. When they refer to NIMS, they refer to a whole community approach. This would include us involving businesses and citizens as well as this government. It also applies to elected and appointed officials who are responsible for jurisdictional policy decisions. This is a NIMS training matrix, which basically outlines the different NIMS classes that all responders, first-line supervisors, midline supervisors, senior level, and elected and appointed officials should have taken to be familiar with the concept of NIMS. Many of the classes you can do online, some of the classes you have to do in the classroom. They're very informative, and it helps assisting people understand the concepts in the same language that the state and federal partners are going to be using during an emergency. Englewood has been a member of the Denver Urban Area Security Initiative, which is short for UASI, for many years. It was covered by the fire department. When the fire department went to Denver, the police department continued attending the UASI meetings. City of Englewood is currently a voting member of the UASI board. They're very strict in their bylaws. If you miss two unexcused meetings, they kick you out of the voting membership. So we have maintained that over the years. At your next city council meeting, I will be bringing over an IGA, which is an updated IGA with UASI. They just updated it this year. It's been reviewed by the city attorney's office. Basically, this says we'd like to continue to be a voting member of the UASI group. Like I said, you'll be seeing that next week in your council packet. Now I'll turn it over to Maria.
So this slide lists some of the priorities that we've identified. As Margaret talked about those charter modifications, since we are a home rule city, managing the completion and adoption of a true emergency operations plan, building off of that draft from 2015, preparing and distributing a statement of the emergency responsibilities. So who does what? You know, what roles do people play in different emergencies? And that might differ from the type of emergency that we're facing, which is where the NIMS comes in. Conducting continuous internal training on the EOP. So as Tim mentioned, it's not a one and done, but an ongoing commitment to training at all levels within the organization. Implementing and managing that NIMS training program, participating and continuing to participate in regional emergency management initiatives, and also tying in the community and business preparedness education. So not just within staff, but reaching out to the community as well. And then finally, exploring different grant opportunities that might be out there. And with that, our current recommendations are to, as we've talked about before, is consider a full-time emergency manager position that would report to the city manager. And again, we feel that that's really an appropriate step for the city to take. There are many other cities approximately our same size that have a dedicated emergency manager position. And by reporting to the city manager's office, they're able to then, you know, reach out to resources and direct all the city departments and work cooperatively with all of them. For the immediate next steps, what we're looking for is to direct the city manager to provide a supplemental preparation for the remainder of 2019 to pursue that, as well as including that full-time position in the 2020 budget. If it wasn't to go, if the council didn't want to continue that route, then we would continue with the current approach whereby we would pursue a formal agreement with Arapahoe County to provide those emergency management efforts on behalf of the city. So with that, the group will stand for comments and questions. Thank you. Counsel, questions? Start off with Ms. Member Berantine.
So regarding the two options, one for Englewood to hire the full-time manager position or the emergency manager position, or to contract that out to the county. Would we be following NIMS if we were to follow, if we were to go with the county approach? Because it does sound like there's still a need for the training. There's still a need for community outreach, which would not be included within the county approach. So would there still be a need to appropriate additional staff or another resource to handle that aspect of it?
Arapahoe County has indicated to us that they would help us with the training of our employees. That would be on an all cart basis, if you will. The part that kind of falls by the wayside is that the interaction with the business community would not be near as robust if the county were doing it as if we were doing it. So that's kind of the major differences. You don't have the all cart system. Maybe you have somebody in-house to manage and track the training. You don't have near the interaction with the community or the citizens with the Arapahoe County council.
I hope you can...
Sure, go ahead.
Quick clarification. We have not had detailed conversations with Arapahoe County or defined exactly what that contract would look like. So part of that would be director of county council and what the needs would be.
Really help the community during the flood. Yes, thank you. Counsel member Berantine?
In 2014, the reason grants were given out was because everybody was kind of redoing their emergency operation plan. Arapahoe County redid theirs from 2015 to 2020, and there were classes that you attended that Rose Lynch attended, that our fire marshal attended. I believe that the only person who's currently certified as per the requirements would be our fire marshal, I believe, at this time. I don't know that anybody else is certified. But I have been presented by some people in the community documentation that at least there were some classes that were taken, although we've made it very clear publicly that we have no documentation for the $5,412 that we took in a grant and how we spent it. That being said, Arapahoe County did go forward with theirs and did, has a standing approved emergency operation plan currently. And so right now, considering that that's 2014, and we were supposed to have it, the emergency operation plan draft was completed, and apparently from some conversation between the mayor and city manager Keck, there was some ruh-ha between Rose Lynch and the fire marshal at the time. That's on tape for, I believe, one of the meetings. I can give it to you. And then it didn't get brought to council. So we have at least a draft that I think is pretty close, but it's going to take some work. Arapahoe County has a plan in place, a pretty good plan from what I've looked at, and so I think that we probably would be better off going with Arapahoe County, which is already a set-up plan that we don't have to worry about because we need something to deck. We have been talking about this and having meetings about this and the regurgitation of the same PowerPoints since October of 2017, and then the meetings that happened in March of 2018, and it continues on, with people in positions knowing full well that we did not have a plan in place, and this council was not made aware of that. So I think if we're going to go, at least at this point, since this entire presentation, PowerPoint that you gave is part of a handout and not what we were given, and I'd like a little bit more chance to look some of that over. But if I have to make a choice, we need something now, and what's available now that's professionally done, approved, vetted, is Arapahoe County. And then we can spend some time to try and see if we can go through our plan, and hopefully it doesn't take two or four years to get that done. There's a few more questions that need to be answered as we're going through this process as well, but at least we're beginning. We need to go with somebody that's already got it done, knows what they're doing, and then we can... I believe what's in the PowerPoint is something around $60,000 to $70,000, and then whatever the pro rate portion of the year, and try and see if we can decide what we're going to do for an extra. But we can't move something in fast enough to cover the rain that's coming next month, or the problem that's coming tomorrow if somebody else should show up at this building with a gun, or if ransomware happens, or another flood. So I share the frustration that people are having, that we have to do something now to cover ourselves, make sure we have something in place as we're going through this process. That's what I would suggest we do.
Just a point of clarification, Ms. Member Berantine. You said something about a mayor having some ruh-ha with Mr. Keck. I don't know who you're referring to there regarding that.
It was in between the break at one of the meetings. I will give you the specifics in a second, as soon as my eyes unfuzz, and it was regarding the grant, the $85,412 that was done. And what the belief was, I think you were asking that you thought the positions for the emergency coordinator that we had, we had several positions who were doing, who were designated, doing that, and you made the comment to him, I thought we had somebody paying for that, and that that wasn't true, but, I mean, they were only being paid a part by the grant. And he said, yeah, and then he said, well, we have the plan come forward from the grant, and then he explains to you that there was some problem with Rose Lynch bringing the plan forward.
Excuse me, I'm going to ask you to stop right there. I can now recall this conversation. Is it on tape? Okay, great. Tell me what date and hour.
I wouldn't remember it, because I...
Okay, so tell me what date and hour it was.
Sure, I'll look in.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'll look through my notes for that. Also, we do currently have a designated people, and if we haven't, if that's not the case, we have the fire marshal come here and say that she shares the designated emergency management position between her position and yours, Mr. Angler. And if we, if that is not the case, and we have a fire marshal who is so confused that she doesn't know what her position is, then we have some bigger issues to deal with. And I would have preferred that she was sitting here alongside you to go ahead and answer some of these questions, and maybe in the future that should happen.
Great. Can we let our city manager speak?
Yeah. Thank you. Laura Herblin, as our fire marshal, was never appointed the city's emergency manager or co-emergency manager officially. Both she and Tim Engler were tasked by then-city manager Keck to help out in the July flood, but this has never been official part... flood, but this has never been official part of her job or designation. But we have several members who have, several members, several staff people who have taken extensive training in emergency management, is that true? But none of them have actually been officially appointed to that position as far as we can determine.
And a point of clarification, the city manager. Excuse me, Councilmember Berentine, can you let others speak now? You cannot respond every text on what does, just let the next group get two people ready to speak here.
That's not true.
Which is an accident.
That is true.
Okay, next one I call you on, you can do it. No problem, okay? Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. So when this became, came before council in 2018, I think before member Sierra joined us, three of our six-person council wasn't prepared to move this forward. And what I don't appreciate is the staff being blamed for this. I mean, for example, our flood last year is such a tiny drop in the bucket of possibilities in terms of disasters that can occur within our city. It's as major as it was for us, that's so small and minute. The job of an emergency manager cannot be a shared responsibility on a part-time basis with a full-time manager. So I appreciate interim city manager Harrow, you sharing that this wasn't an assigned position to Mr. Engler and the fire marshal. But furthermore, I am 100% in favor of hiring a full-time individual to fulfill these duties. What goes into the role of a city manager is so vast. And every dollar, I think the Pew Charitable Foundation said that every dollar spent in preparing for disaster recovery saves $6. So it's six times as much to try and recover if we haven't done any of that work in advance. Furthermore, this is something that every, that every city should have. It's really expansive, the preparation stage, mitigation stage, the recovery stage, that entire cycle, there are four components of it, and all of the work that goes into those four components, when you really understand that, and some of it's referenced, much of it's referenced in the citations we heard earlier this evening, it really necessitates a standalone person. So I'm absolutely, I think, sure, if something were to happen tonight, we need some help, and it's good that the county is there to support us. But I think it would be a great mistake on our part to not assign that duty and take this very, very seriously so that just now and into the future, as we heard, it's not a standalone once in a, I think this is an ongoing effort, ongoing documentation, ongoing policies. Some of these policies also need to be in place before FEMA will recognize that we will lose a great deal of reimbursement options if certain policies aren't adhered to before the emergency takes place. I mean, there's, there's a lot in this, and I want us to take it seriously and without going through the litany of what it is, I will say that I'm in favor of appropriating the funds and looking to hire someone who's a resident city manager or emergency manager underneath the role of the city manager.
I just want to stop for a second. I heard you push your button.
I did.
And I looked at the, maybe you had turned it off, but it's, okay, it's not working. So I know, I think you were texting, because I think you did it before. So Mayor Corchum, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate what councilmember Wink said about every city should have an emergency plan. It is required by law, and we've been operating without a plan. Apparently, the 2010 plan that came in the request, I actually read that plan, it is an amazing plan, but I would like to know when that was codified. When did we make it an ordinance? Because I looked through all of the 2010 agendas and could not find anywhere where that was codified.
Go ahead.
In our research, if I'm wrong, council has never codified an emergency manager plan in the city. So we do not have a plan. So if we got an emergency manager two days, how long would it take for an emergency manager to get a plan in place? Anybody know?
I know.
Well, I believe our typical hiring process, we have to develop the job description, probably based on other agencies, that would take several weeks. And then typically we have a three, four week open period where people submit their applications, and then we go through the, review those applications in the interview process. So at least a couple of months to go through that.
So when we're looking at two to three months to even get them on board, how long is it going to take them to get a plan up and in place? By the time the flood season is over? We need an emergency operations plan right now. I believe councilmember Berentine's suggestion was absolutely correct, that we probably should hire Arapahoe County right now, get Arapahoe County on board, get them into trained staff. And I understand that Commander Engler, that it would be more robust if we had our own. Personally, the staff needs to be trained, and we need to be working with the citizens and with the businesses, our own staff. In looking, the little jump drive that we got with all the flood data on it, I believe part of the problem ends up with staff also, because there was a, there was an email chain between Mr. Keck and between the fire marshal, and I believe you may have been included, Commander Engler, and Mr. Keck kept asking them for information from other staff that needed to respond. The problem is, we have staff that have other jobs and they can't get this all done. And so the bottom line is, we're not going to be able to get it done that fast, even if we hire an emergency manager. We are looking for a city manager, and I believe if we hire Arapahoe County now, we can take care of that. And in 2020, then we can decide whether we want to move forward with hiring our own manager. I am not against hiring our own manager, but the flood was a microcosm of what could happen if we had an emergency. We are not prepared, and we need to move forward quickly on getting this in place. And then talk about the emergency manager position, perhaps in the next budget cycle.
Councilmember Martinez. Thank you. I echo the sentiments of councilmember Wink. We started these discussions in depth a year ago. Had we made the decision, and I really wish we did at that time, to move forward with a full-time emergency manager, we would be pretty much ready to rock right now. The, I was really, and still am, in favor 100% of having our own dedicated person. It's too much work to add on to somebody else's job. It is too important of a job to be kind of secondary to anybody's tasks. It needs to be its own full-time position. I felt that way from the beginning when we talked about it a year ago. I still feel the same way today. We didn't have majority to move forward on a full-time person then. We've had some, you know, situations between now and then that reminds us that we need to take this seriously, and we need a full-time person to do this. It's too much and too important to tap onto somebody else's job. I'm a little bit frustrated with this because, you know, had we implemented it a year ago, we wouldn't even be having this discussion today. Things would have gone a lot smoother in July last year, and on and on. And so I am in favor of moving forward with a full-time person. I agree, we need something right now, but I don't want to do another interim band-aid solution. This is a really big deal, and we need to have it full-time. You know, let alone the, another important piece of this is the community portion with the businesses, the schools, hospitals, the business community, they all need to be involved. And I don't want to skip that part, it's a really important part. And I think it warrants of having a full-time person. Said this a year ago, said it every time we talked about it, still believe it, would like to see us move forward in that direction.
Thank you. Councilmember Corchum.
I would like to start with some of the prior presentations, and there's some presumptuous statements being made here. The last presentation we had on this was May 14th in 2018. The flood was in July. The notion that if we would have gone forward with an emergency manager, we wouldn't even have one in place by July of the flood occurred is entirely correct. We wouldn't even have one higher, let alone be a plan in place. I mean, there's way too much Monday morning quarterbacking going on, and it really, blame shouldn't be assessed anywhere at this point. I think we're all in agreement that we are well prepared for an emergency if work happened tomorrow. I agree that, I'm not sure that we have time in the short term to go through the entire hiring process and emergency manager, bring them on, go through the plans. I think that in the short term, we do reach out to Arapahoe County. As I'm looking to Mark Wolf's presentation back from May of 2018, there were pros and cons to the full-time manager that we hired as a city staff versus Arapahoe County. Those aren't quite as fleshed out in tonight's presentation, as I'm glad to see them. That seems like the quickest avenue to get something in place right here, right now, was Arapahoe County. It looks like that's the less expensive of the two as well. That was $60,000 a year. I believe we're still in the question portion of this. And so my question is, do you know, can we prorate the contract with Arapahoe County? Can we bring them on for the next three, six months while we pursue an emergency manager and then discontinue that service and get a full-time emergency manager in place?
I'm very familiar with the emergency manager for Arapahoe County. He's very willing to work with the city. I think they would be very flexible. I can't speak 100% about, you know, what the contract would look like. I can certainly reach out to him and get more information, or I can have him come and speak for you if you'd like that.
Sure. I'm in the same mindset, really everybody up here, so how can we get this resolved as quickly as possible? I know that there's different perspectives on reaching that goal. To me, Arapahoe County seems like the quickest way to get to me right here, right now, get step-train, get the EOP finalized, and then we can continue down the road of a full-time city manager if we definitely council agree to. At a minimum though, I would like to just see how quickly we can, I guess, get the full details on Arapahoe County, what services they provide, what gaps they fill. If we bring Arapahoe County in, does staff feel comfortable, we've covered all our emergency needs? Or do you feel that there's still holes that we need to get plugged? So that would be for me, but again, I appreciate the urgency, I think everybody up here shares it. And at this point in time, to me, it seems the quickest way forward would be Arapahoe County. But certainly, I'm sure there's more things along that too. Thank you.
Councilmember Sierra, do you want to chime in at all?
No need for the light, is there? I agree as well with councilmember Westa, and a few others here, that I think the best approach would be to get the county involved, just in terms of just getting a plan in place. But I think just based off what is required to keep staff, community involved, and there probably is, there is a need for an emergency manager position, but that depends on 2020 and focus on the county putting together a plan in place.
Thank you. I'm going to weigh in at this point, and I'll come back to those who have done the second lights or third lights up. First of all, I do not want to spare any expense on this, because Arapahoe is cheaper or whatever is not an issue for me, it's probably the best service. In the meantime, I think we need something, so I would like us to explore Arapahoe for right now. And then I would like us to put in the budget a position, a full position for the next year's budget. And when we hire our new city manager, let them be the hiring person for that to make sure that person is building their team in the way that they want to with the good, you know, kinds of things that we learn in the next, whatever, six months with an Arapahoe County kind of contract. So that would be my preference. I also think that, yes, a year, year and a half ago, even before then, 2015, we've been talking about this, and council's been the obstacle on this. Would it have prevented a flood? No, the flood was going to come regardless. So we can't blame anybody for a flood, flood game. We got to do what's right next, though. Would it have probably changed the angst for two, three days? Because it took us a while to get going, absolutely. So I wish we had voted, you know, a year and a half ago to go with someone, but we didn't. So that's what it is. We move forward, we learn from that mistake and do it right. And so I am not in favor of putting this off and waiting two or three months to hire somebody. I do think we need someone now, and we learn from it, and then put it in the budget for a full-time permanent position, and then the city manager that we hired. Perhaps we'll learn that it works with Arapahoe County. We don't know. Councilmember Berentine, and then Councilmember Gray.
I think part of the frustration, Councilmember Westa, is that if you don't know your history, you're going to repeat it. And we had $85,000 provided to us to take care of this in 2014, so that we would be ready for 2015. People were paid, and a whole grant established on the expenditure of that money, and we have no record of it. We don't have documentation of how it was spent. Then that starts to lead to, are we being fiduciary to the money and being accountable to what we're doing and having the end product? The end product was well-known by the city manager at the time, that we didn't have an emergency operating plan that was current. Margaret Rockletter, when you went through your ransomware and in your presentation in March, you stated that there was a 2,000 emergency operating plan. I don't know whether that was just for your department or for the city, but what your comment was, is that that wasn't pertinent to 2018. I agree. That's why money was given in time and effort and energy doing the grant, and we didn't seem to follow up on it. So what I'm trying to make sure is that whatever process we go through, that we follow through, make sure that there's accountability, and that we end up with the end product that the taxpayers are paying for. The $87,000 might have come from Homeland Security and the feds, but it's still taxpayer dollars, and it was meant for a purpose, and the purpose didn't happen. Then it became obvious that our city manager knew, not only from the February 17 incident here in this building, but then again, from the incident that happened for the ransomware. And so that's why we began talking about it in March of 2018. And you are correct, there are, God couldn't have gotten us all of that fast enough probably to go ahead and do the flood. Then my angst comes in, is that we had two years prior to that and knew. This council did not vote down an emergency manager. The city manager did. In the budget meeting for 625, he took it off the table. And how he took it off the table was, he said he was talking to Littleton and that they were going to co-share that. He took the position off. This council never, none of us ever took it off the table. He took that position out of there. There were several positions listed, and if you go back and listen to the meeting or look at the budget documents, the city manager took that off. The city manager, who was well aware that we didn't have a current plan, who didn't follow up on the $85,000 in the grant, and maybe council should have done more diligence in following up on all of those things. Although I don't think we get into those kind of minutia, we don't even have the line added to kind of follow up. We didn't know that they had got rid of those positions when they got rid of the old fire department. And I'm very concerned that we have an employee that believes that they're the designated emergency manager, and we don't have that issue. At least the interim city manager has made the comment that she was, along with Engler, responsible for the flood. And when we have constituents being answered on court requests from our interim city manager, and that's not as much her fault as what she was handed, is that there is no plan, we don't, we don't have anybody in place, and we have not prepared reports detailing the city's past emergency responses. That's illegal. All of what we agreed to with the organizations we're already with, that's not legal. We cannot declare an emergency like you did, we cannot get funds, which means that I believe that some of these organizations were not told the truth about whether we had an emergency operating plan. So I want to make sure, I wasn't told the truth. I have asked now four months to get a copy of the emergency operating plan, and told them it was not. I have a document here that Mark Wolf says we have one that was, the current emergency operating plan was adopted by city council in 2010. I've got documentation from the IT that was 2,000. I've got budget, grants that say we did one in 2015, and now we've got a draft that apparently just sat there and did nothing. apparently just sat there and did nothing. So what I want us to learn from this, is that if we move forward and we appropriate money for this, that we have some oversight, that there's something, that this is just not more money going down the drain and accomplishing nothing. I'm very frustrated by that happening, and I'm very frustrated that we seem to be so ill-prepared, had three emergencies, and we're sitting here a year later and still don't have it in place. And we had a draft that we could have at least been looking over and doing, we could have been hiring somebody. So I want us to at least understand the history piece of this, because everybody seems to be so confused about what's going on, that it makes it very difficult to just say, you know what? Ignore it, water under the bridge, too bad, that was yesterday. But I am afraid that we're going to continue to repeat that history if we don't handle things differently. The same thinking that got us into this problem will not be the thinking that gets us out of it. So that's why I did the research, that's why I looked at all of this documentation, because every time I asked a question, or the citizens are asking court questions, there are going to be different answers and different information, and if we aren't able to come to the same page, it's going to be very difficult for us to move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Sierra, or is it Questa?
Are we submitting the question, please?
Yeah. Well, we're, in this, we can do both, so whatever question, and let's get some direction. I'd like to take the next five minutes to get direction.
So it seems that in the midst of the flood, that the Fire Marshal, my gentleman name offhand, and then Commander Engler were put in that place of emergency manager? If I, Mr. Peck, if I'm understanding that correctly?
Co-emergency responders to help, but not, I mean, it wasn't their job title, but he asked them to take on that task during the flood.
And so, and I guess to that, the end of that sentence there, that was during the flood, that does not remain currently. So as it stands right now, there is not anybody designated at all for that position?
I am by default, by law.
Okay. Thank you.
Which is what Councilor, Manager Peck believed all along, too, if it gets him, he loves it. Councilmember Sierra.
I think I already stated my direction, which way I wanted to move forward, but if there was an emergency operation plan that is put in place by Arapahoe County, if we go down that direction, or if we put an emergency manager in place, we would actually talk about that, we would actually set up a study set and co-over the EOP with all of them.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
As we move forward, we have to bring it to council, because we adopted by council, we're moving forward.
Thank you.
To our knowledge, there's never been a plan adopted by council, we've not found any there.
Councilmember Sierra, what is your suggestion for moving forward, then? If that's going to be your main topic?
Okay. Preference is, short-term, move forward with Arapahoe County.
Okay. And do you want anyone to be looking, do you want us to be looking at budgeting a full-time position or putting one in?
Yes, 2,000.
Then any manager in time, okay?
Correct, yes.
All right. Councilmember Berentine, let's stick to that as the next step, okay? What do you want to do next?
I've already stated from the beginning that I believe Arapahoe County already has a setup here. I want clarification from comment, from a director or Fire Marshal, said that she believes that she is the emergency manager. I am tired of skirting around these kind of issues. That is what, that is what City Manager Peck told agencies that he went for funding for, that we had an emergency plan in place, and we had a designated employee. Now, if that's what he needed to do to get that, if he was willing to lie, then I want to make sure that we understand that. If that isn't, then I want to make sure that either an employee believes that they have a position that they do not, she seems to be intelligent, so. So I would like it to stop being stated as a fact until we vet this information out and figure out what we're, what we said is not what's in there.
So you prefer to do nothing until something aligns with whatever you believe for all this?
No. I said from the beginning that I want Arapahoe County in there, because they already have the expertise and they have the setup, in which we were already working with them in 2015 when we had the grant.
Thank you, Councilmember Berentine, that's great, thank you. I want to start with me. Councilmember Martinez?
I would prefer a full-time person, but if we need something now, I would be fine with going with Arapahoe County, but as long as we concurrently plan for having our own individual person at the same time, so we can take that moving along.
Councilmember Questa.
I'm looking forward to, I hate to say just move forward right now with Arapahoe County. I think that we do need more information, but I understand we don't have to wait for more information either, so I appreciate the props there. The sooner we can get the details on, here's what they do, here's what they can do for staff, here's the holes we still have unfilled, that will be helpful. I am not in any way apprehensive about moving forward with Arapahoe County, I just want to make sure we have a full understanding of their services and what we're going to be provided with.
We would have to do that regardless, whether you were, we have to get that information. Councilmember Wink.
Thank you, Mayor. I do think we need something in place at this moment. What I want us to do, though, is not delay in beginning the process to hire a full-time person. So waiting until, I'm not sure how many steps we can take now in advance of even securing a city manager, that's a permanent role, but I want us to get moving on that process ASAP, and not delay on it just because we're relying on Arapahoe County for now, for the time being.
Great, thank you. Mayor Porte Russell?
I would like to move forward with Arapahoe County, and can we get the information that we need by the council meeting next week?
I would say that that's unlikely, you would need to have conversations in detail to Arapahoe County, what your desires are for that position, would you agree?
I can reach out to their lieutenant tomorrow. I'm not sure what his schedule is, but I could talk to him and give that information back, get it informed with Councilor Questa, but that's acceptable.
That would be, that would be helpful. I would like, I'm not, I mean, I think it's going to take more detailed negotiations to see what's involved. It's a very first step, and we make it top priority.
Right, and I don't want to, right, it's a process. I don't want to interfere with negotiations or anything, and as far as moving forward, I'm okay with moving forward, but I think that we ought to get Arapahoe County on board, see how that's working, see how the trading goes, and then decide whether we want to move forward with the emergency manager or wait. I think also, having the new city manager on board will help us with this process, and I know that one of the issues that came up in the discussion over the three or four months that we worked on this in 2018, even you, Council, or Mayor Olson, had asked, you know, about, were there other positions that needed to be filled? And so it could be that we need to look at other positions that we might need, so I think we shouldn't, I'm not saying delay this forever, but I'm saying I think we ought to get a few other things in place, and then, could we put that on the parking lot or house floor?
All right, I think we have everyone, at least enough, to move forward to try out Arapahoe County, and then I think there might be enough of us to say, we'd like to see what a position would look like in funding and to get it into the budgets, we start that process. I'm going to shut the conversation now.
I have one additional question about this.
Thirty seconds.
You mentioned, Mr. Engler, about a forgotten position, Detective Police Officer Engler, sorry, Commander, there you go, I'm sorry, that in the meeting on April 9th, and it was a meeting on April 9th, Mayor, that you made that claim?
In 2018?
Yes, 2018, April 9th. Where you mentioned that Kara Bush is actually the power user for COO, is she still that designation?
She still works for the city, and she is, she's probably the most adept at that software system that the city has as well.
Okay. Is there anyone else who's certified besides the Fire Marshal?
I don't believe the Fire Marshal has an emergency manager certificate.
I believe she does, but if she doesn't, is there anybody else that you know?
I have extensive NIMH training, but I do not have a certificate as of this day.
Thank you. Why don't we do this? Can you find out, you know, city manager, what training you have and all of this, and sort of, that's a common part of some of these training? Just because you're not certified, it's going to be inaccurate, right? So just to get a sense, it would be nice to know. Thank you. All right, that's it.
This is the manager, just for clarification.
Thank you so much for being here.
Marshall, the amount of money that he presented in here was actually 18 months old, almost two years old by the time he put it in here. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands that clarification, because that was already, I did not update that when he put it in here. When I listened to the meeting, he clarified that the information, those funding, was actually already 18 months, two years old.
Right, we did not go to the county and get exactly what they were going to cost at the last, so we'll get all that together, and we'll come back and present it to us. So thank you very much, I appreciate you. Thanks to the team that worked on this. It's kind of a thankless job, because you get blamed for everything in the past, even though that's not your job, but I appreciate the kind of work that you've done to try to get us up to speed to where we are. Thank you. I think we'll take a quick...